I'd like to follow up on your board meeting's order, please. And to approve the minutes for last meeting.
Second.
By Brad, second by Sam. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
The next on agenda is to approve our lease voucher.
Just be quick, you've got Brad's alternate, correct? So you need to appoint Zach today tonight?
Yeah. I'm sorry. Thanks. To approve our lease voucher. Approved.
Second. Second by Brad, discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on our agenda is Thurl Fisher. Anyone here for Thurl Fisher?
Want to take me out now?
Can just briefly give us an idea of what you're doing, because we've been... We're pretty familiar with this site.
We're gonna put two other things in the mechanical project. And then we're going to do that with the closing of the building, because of some of these limitations that we have.
Now, I noticed on your application, you had one height, but somewhere else you had a second height.
Yeah, first of all, the building can actually be visible, this place, it's not smaller than Fisher. But the higher portion has to jump up to forty-four feet.
So Charles, I noted on the CO that the proposed height is forty, so that's...
That's incorrect, that was forty-four.
I think I'm drawing David's forty, but I believe in the land tract, it's only forty-four, so.
Yeah, great.
You have any questions?
Will we approve?
Second. We approved Dave's, which specified on height.
Yeah, we...
Forty-four feet for third of the building, and another portion by nineteen-six. So last year.
Let me say, we would approve with maximum height of forty-four feet.
Okay, I got you. Second, someone? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next agenda, Gerald Soto on Stanley. For him?
Hello? Name Cory Alback from the Lockton Park District, and maybe have the... Gerald Soto, perhaps George storage. Mr. Soto and Mrs. Soto are here all this evening. So what we have pending before the town is an incentive zoning request. The request for incentive includes a lot merger and some approvals that are required to be redeemed parcel. Hopefully, you've received a copy of my July twenty-ninth application form, where we go through in detail the application, what we're proposing, and this is a new component of the comprehensive plan. It also included a signed statement from the neighbors that they reviewed the plan, and that they have no objection to the plan. Essentially, what we're trying to do is merge a portion of a currently residential parcel on Stanley with a commercial parcel on baseline. And the most helpful visual for you is sort of the back of the packet, in a state that looks like this. So you can see, for anyone who may be participating on Zoom, that visually impaired, I'm showing a map of two parcels outlined in blue, one of which is on baseline road, and the other of which runs on Stanley road. So the portion of the Stanley parcel that follows the south boundary of the baseline parcel, what we're seeking to do is extend the south boundary of the baseline parcel across the Stanley parcel to include that rear area of the Stanley parcel in with the commercial baseline parcel. What will result is a residential parcel that presently improves as a single-family home that will remain on Stanley. The lot that will remain on Stanley will be sufficient in overall lot cover. So one of the incentives that we're requesting is to authorize a lot deficient in its lot area. As we keep having the application, there are literally dozens of lots along Stanley Road that are deficient in lot area. This page outlines in yellow every one of the parcels that are on Stanley that are also deficient in lot area. Who will not be altering the essential characteristics of this neighborhood by leaving a remaining parcel that is deficient in lot area. In fact, the residential lot directed to the east of this parcel is much smaller than the lot that we would be choosing. The other incentive that we're asking for is somewhat hyper-technical. The existing lot, I'd exist right now on Stanley, only has one hundred and forty feet of front. We are not changing the width of that lot in any way, but it's a lawful non-conforming lot, meaning one hundred and forty feet is already deficient in its overall lot width. Again, we're not changing the lot width in any way, because we are amending the parcel. We are asking for incentive to continue to maintain a one hundred and forty foot parcel width. So that the northern portion of the Stanley parcel, again, will be merged in with the commercial baseline parcel to incorporate into Mr. Soto's storage facility. So we did previously go before the zoning board, and we'll seek to variance to these items. The zoning board of appeals denied the variances. There is litigation pending, but in working with the town to resolve the litigation, it was suggested that we pursue this incentive zoning request. And so that is why we are here, requesting this authorization to the town board. As a zoning amendment, it is on recommendation of the planning board. We've been referred here for your recommendation on our incentive zoning request, and we will go back before the town board for their approval request.
Currently, how big is the parcel now, before your...
So right now, this Stanley parcel, this Stanley parcel in total, bear with me one moment. I know that it is two point one one, thank you, and we are requesting one point one three four.
So it's already under the three acre septic rule as it is?
Exactly, it's a lawful non-conforming parcel, both as to its width and as to its total lot area. So although we are asking for a one point one three four parcel, which is sixty-two percent from the three acres, we're not even three acres to begin with.
Would... You said you were in the term, sir?
I am.
Would it still be required from Erie County Health Department, because you're changing the line to smaller? Isn't that subject there?
There's no... Yeah, there's no Erie County approval that I'm aware of, associated with the merger.
And now, I didn't gather the right package, but you said there was a letter from the neighbor to the east?
Yep, the very last page looks like this. This was submitted initially with our zoning application. This is from both neighbors to the east and the west, and notably, the neighbor to the east, referring back to his document. The neighbor from the east actually owns all four of these parcels. So the neighbor to the east, and the neighbor to the west, they both consented.
I got two, one.
Yeah.
I think I might have seen that question.
He needs the correspondence from the neighbors, because that was not enough.
Yeah, it should have been, with the last page, it's not submitted, I ought to make a few off. It says, regarding the approval required by the county grant, I ensure that very property location at twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-seven Stanley road. I, we, and other signs have reviewed the proposal, including the request for area variance to decrease the lot area, and have no objection. Again, this was done as part of the variance application that was submitted to the zoning board of appeals. Exact same plan that we're presenting.
That letter was on the same, you know, in the problem, reducing, they're gonna say about R one A to M one.
They are aware of exactly what Mr. Soto is doing.
Not the same.
You're right. Mr. Soto gave them a copy of the plan, and the proposal for the zoning board of appeals, when he had these done by neighbors. They fully understand that the whole purpose of going to the zoning board was to merge the parts of name with the...
And the remaining personal, I'm sure, you're those point nine eight five acres?
Correct. Point nine eight five acres. No, I'm sorry, one, sorry, one point one three four. The remaining parcel, the parcel to the north that's being merged there will be point nine eight five acres, and the southern portion will be one hundred, one point one three four.
Brad, someone had this portion of the lot that's gonna be severed, and then joined? It's gonna be joined, there are existing no more on baseline. Oh, I understand.
The remaining lot is gonna be point nine eight four eight acres. Four fifteen, point two nine by one oh three, point three zero, for your provided diagram is point nine eight four eight acres.
So when he adds, if this goes through, when he adds the back parcel to the baseline parcel, the neighbor to the west, I mean, assuming it was one forty-five, under...
Neighbor to the west is...
Or twenty thirty-seven?
Twenty forty-five.
Is that the person?
Yes, one of them. And then when you extend, if this is approved, when you extend your storage facility, there should be something proposed between the time one and hour one, on that back line, what's your what's your proposal for that?
When we, before that is implemented, we will presumably have to get a site plan approval or other to implement that. This only relates to authorization of the use.
Lot all.
Yeah, there's a, I think there's a fifty foot.
It's a fifty foot.
So really, of that hundred and sixteen, only a couple of two.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, understood.
Yeah. But yeah, fifty foot, and I'm the, yeah, fifty foot, then we're against the residential one twenty-five.
So Brad, just a little confused, tonight you know, the zoning board of appeals, and that's two, is your appeal, and it says it's, it's been granted. So you said it ends, and just reading ZBAA hereby determines if the applicant's use warrants is granted, subject to the following pre-conditions.
I don't know what that is, but we were definitely denied by the VBS.
Where did you see this, well, Dave?
Well, I believe it's passed it out.
What page?
Uh, so far, the minutes. Page eight, page eight, I mean, it's a, it's a nine-page document, and I haven't read the whole thing, but I just went to the conclusion. Talking about what Arlene gave us, David, you didn't believe? Yeah, yeah.
Page eight.
Yeah, I do too, President Patel. There's nothing in here with respect to the latency, with respect to...
What are you looking at, the acres there?
What did I see?
Four seventy-eight by one oh three?
Yes, divided by forty-three, five sixty is point nine eight.
Yeah, the northern part that's being merged is point nine eight, right?
No, he said, it said remaining parcel to be this dimension, remaining parcel, so this parcel. And so do the...
Yeah, you're looking, you're looking at, this was a revi, that was initially done wrong, that, what are you looking at there? Is that?
This is the packet that I was given.
Yeah, that was the zoning board packet, that was corrected at, for the zoning board. Look at the packet that we submitted to the town board. We had the numbers transposed in initial application of the zoning work. The parcel that's remaining is, I'm certain of it, is one point one three four acres. The remaining residential parcel is one point one three four acres. The point nine eight is the parcel that we will be merging with the commercial parcel. Yeah, so that's the...
That's, that's not on sitting in front of the board.
This is my application to the town board. You might have the original application that was submitted to the zoning board of appeals, which was something corrected before the zoning board of appeals, because we transposed a number on this chart. We transposed the number.
Yeah, we didn't return it on one edition to the town, regular, or the appeals.
So that wasn't the initial submitted, that submitted was then corrected before the zoning board of appeals, I was going to add. And certainly correct from what we filed, found, which is July twenty-ninth submitted. So this should have come on the town board, to the town board, through the third conference, that there was a screw-up. Town board, next to the Senate, referred back to the town board, so there was a requirement, you know, to do that. We didn't know there were changes that we put in before we passed, because I'm sorry for that. And I'm happy to quickly walk through it, the real things that are different in what we need to be found with. It's just a little different type of analysis, because the standards before the town board for the incentive zoning, and the zoning board of appeals for the variance is are much different. So what we focused on in this middle of the town board, in addition to correcting that initial error that was in the zoning board application, was explaining why this, in essence, is in accordance with the town's comprehensive plan. That merging this portion of the parcel in with the baseline parcel in keeping with the town's design. The theory of this goal, the objective of the comprehensive plan is to take advantage of embody energy from existing developments, establish regulations that focus on design, own specific plans, evaluate the retail supply and demand of the islands, to identify private ski market sequences that support residents, as well as make Grand Island more attractive location for these families. They think, maintain the unique island character, and balance and grow up in strategic locations. The comprehensive plan seeks to provide facilities and services that meet the physical, social, and cultural needs of Grand Island residents, build community, and perhaps provide an attractive and inviting environment to train and future residents. Last, through the compliance, that's for, to quote, maintain a unique island character, especially within existing neighborhoods, by ensuring development, subdivision, refineries, real areas, by asset price system, or in terms of market trends, which mix larger lots and smaller, more manageable lots. So we go through a couple pages of comprehensive plan analysis, with course for the compliance. Shows why it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I think this was also in the zoning board application, shows the other substandard particles.
What's to require, so that, from the island one to island one? I think it's fifty feet. So on a hundred and three show, parcel. He's gonna have to fifty feet on the base on, of the area of the... And the east person, and who's behind him?
The twenty forty-five meter.
Vacant land.
That's what's up.
The north is the fusillo coordination.
Okay. So you're gonna have to have twenty-five foot here, twenty-five foot here. This is the line, that's the twenty-five feet, and the twenty-five feet this way, and other than that. Well, again, we're not talking about site plans tonight, we're talking about permissibility of reason, severing, joining, reason. So, you know, whatever, whatever sighting is done, is a whole other application.
And I think they're familiar with this, this on this. Sir, can I see, I haven't got this one. So where, where are you coming straight across?
Yeah.
Straight, straight across, over what kind of areas, over the state? On Mr. Soto's block.
On the residential portion.
So you're just gonna take off the, back, trying, I'm sorry, right there.
State of France.
Straight across, gotcha, okay. Anyone else here?
Yes, he does.
He owns that lot.
Brad.
He owns the whole residential lot on Stanley, and the whole lot.
Gotcha.
The year coming, that, a little confused, referring to incentive zoning, correct? I'm not familiar with that.
And is that in our code?
I'm not surprised.
Is it just something, is it just in the company, or is it actually in the zoning?
It was actually written here, zoning board, it's a variant for the, you know, in the zone of books? Yeah, it's a, it's section four oh seven dash twenty. And it may not be in your book yet, it will happen to be online, so they own a provisional code.
Incentive zoning has been in there, the question, I guess, the question that the town board will have to go is what, you know, what benefit does the town board receive in granting these approvals? It's truly something that, you know, whether this board discusses that tonight, or ultimately, if it gets to the town board, that's one piece of the puzzle.
It's a subjective thing, in their discretion.
What are you doing with the incentive?
The application is proposing, in lieu of a specific incentive, is proposing a five thousand dollar thing.
Oh. I wasn't thinking, I was wondering what the incentive, if there is an incentive. Well, I think, I think, you know, if I were sitting on the town board, I could say incentive is, is that you're, you're creating, taking a piece of vacant land, that basically that land, eventually it's going to be taxable, as a commercial entity. So incentive is for residents of the town, maybe good.
And of course, you know, although it's not a direct, um, continued viability of the homegrown, sort of a victim of their own success, and that they could not have anticipated, they would have been successful as they are, rather than relocate somewhere else, to be able to utilize the existing property to do a minor expansion of the working business.
One thing quick, though, come to light Cory, because you had said there's no Erie County permits associated with this. However, when, with a residential property on septic, and if you were creating lots, you have to have a reservation of space to duplicate the septic field. So just, you know, there is a, there is also, you know, and so, you know, we can look at this lot, we can try to ascertain what you would do, but also, there is a setback requirement from Wetlands. Erie County has come back to the town. Casey and I have both recently dealt with projects and proposed developments, and the placement of septic fields in proximity to Wetlands. Sounds almost counterproductive, you know, with their stance, but that is something they're taking. So, you know, has, have you, you know, as you're saying, oh, there's no permits required. Have you guys looked at the applicability of, where could this be, how could this be, where's the duplicate field location? Because you, you know, okay, go to the backyard, you got a wetland in the backyard, you're offside of that wetland, front yard, whatever, I'm just, you know, as we change this lot, sure, slicing the back off doesn't, but it's still kind of... It plays in those regulations, though, I mean, not directly in.
Casey, do you remember what we just got? Two guys, the septic's on the front yard, it's in the front yard, the tank and the... The current system is on this thing, yeah, is on the front, it was done about two years ago. Yeah, so you would, the whole thing's in the front, there's nothing in the backyard at all. I'm curious, a little on, you want to move up a lot? And I, I won't lie.
And that makes sense, Gary.
But it is the whole septic area in front. And you can see the, the other tanks out there.
You have the septic carriers.
Sample loops. Yeah, goes right off of there. At the right side. I'll say it a little bit.
I guess it wouldn't be altering the ability to do that in any way.
Yeah, the septic can be changed, just gonna put it back in the front.
You wouldn't put it, not put it back.
Yeah, everybody's putting them in the front anyhow, yeah, I try to get away from the back.
Any other questions from anyone? Motion on anyone?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to recommend to the town, the approval, to the town board, the approval of severing that portion of the R one A lot in Stanley Road, and joining it to, merging it with the current M one parcel from your baseline road. Further, that we acknowledge that the resultant R one A lot, which has been in existence, which is already, well, just, that's been in existence, it results in an efficiency in terms of the size of the lot, so we acknowledge that. And further, to have the town board, recommend to the town board to rezone the severed portion as M one, and it's going to the existing M one. I know that's enough for, the essence of it is to approve the application. Well, second that, but I would also add to that, the applicant is willing to pay, is that gone to the five thousand dollars, rules incentive zone. Okay, so we're... Through section, uh, twenty, that's the incentive zone.
And I would like to acknowledge, too, that, that the, the drawing we were facing with the, the accurate acreage.
It's recording.
It's not recorded.
Seven twenty-nine, twenty-one.
Yeah, that's seven twenty-nine, twenty-one.
Did you catch that last third? Nice, I don't know, Sandy's, seven twenty-nine, twenty-one, in board. That was the one that this, the same as ours, all, it's an updated one. We get off, motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Well, it was Bob's motion, he has to go on, say. I'm sorry? You made the motion, and you added stuff to it.
No, I'm fine, I think. And Sandy's additions were?
I just added data, because people, for Sandy's, because that's what Sandy's rehearsed.
Yeah, and should we make some acknowledgement to the pending, the outcome of the zoning board of the fields thing?
I don't know about that, Sandy, because we're not, you know, we're not, we are not in the middle of any litigation. We're simply, you know, advising, making the recommendation on the application, so if there is any litigation pending, or that's been filed, we really have no knowledge of it.
Right. Bob, Bob, a lot of times when you guys either, you know, split, mergers, moves, whatever, you have a blanket statement of not necessarily guaranteeing buildability of the parcel, other restrictions on it, setbacks, wetlands, any such things, will, will obviously evaluate, evaluated at a building, you know, at time of a site plan for expansion.
Yeah, that's a good point, Bob, thanks for that, in order being, when she, you know, describes this, it's kind of a routine addition. I would think a proposed site plan wasn't included, so I think we need to, say that. Well. The applications for a reason, for a split, merger, and use, not a site plan, so I don't think we can acknowledge a site plan per se, so.
Well, I want to say, shoot.
Yeah, I would, I would much rather have a site plan that puts my law that, it's gonna make it out on. You can't, you can't, you can't rezone. You can't, what I'm saying, on this survey, I guess, the question, there looks like buildings down here that are not built yet?
Existing. These are existing services.
Oh, that's the existing, that, this one here, or these?
Mr. Soto, this one here, these are all existing parts.
Yeah, yeah, everything on it is, it's not proposed, it's all done at the code, with the three buildings, right? Yeah, three, three buildings, yeah, then a couple others, that's already up. Yeah, everything, everything's, everything's already there. It ain't happening, yeah, because I just, I just built them last year, so. Yeah, two years and a half ago, somebody, last year we built them, we built them last year, we finished them up in March. No problem, I can say anything, anything guys. Right now, maybe, maybe some more buildings, I don't know, we've got a lot of calls, but again, it's kind of like, yeah, I just wanted to discuss, and we can do something, I don't want to say anything, and then it's true, and again, we go up to the town, and things that say that. We just get tons of calls for the trailers and campers and stuff, and just to get them out of the neighborhood, we thought, maybe that's the way to go through. Yeah, they brought it back and help the community. We don't have big enough spots. All right, then.
All right, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion?
Ellie, you got all that?
All, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, next is the draft of the solar law. Under the understanding that the two thousand seventeen law, which is pages being scrapped or the new solar law. Which is one page. One thing.
I don't know if you want me to comment on it at all, so that is what happened. Totally stressful with the law. We hired an attorney that they've done new laws in surrounding areas similar to this law. And they're the ones that actually drafted this law, but the brand new law, it's not a red line, it's complete start reason, scratch and ground up.
And attorney is?
The Zoglin Group.
Zoglin Group, thank you.
So somehow this is the draft that got missed in the package.
The solar law, I think? You might be thinking of the the scoping document. Also putting in the planning board. This one definitely.
One, one thing I'd like to, wish more of us here, but one thing that was asked is in the first law, the one that we currently have, there is some discussion on residential halls that the solar pales on the roof should match the hall, and it seems that I didn't seem to find it in the law.
Those I think are, Dave, I think those are tier one, tier two. I think the essence of the nice discussion. And and tier one, tier two are mentioned here in terms of permitting requirements. But the essence of having nice discussion is as it applies to. Yeah, I would also think that that would more be addressed through architectural design and things like that, but. On on page six, permitting requirements for tier one, page seven, requirements for tier two. And then the meat of this thing goes to. But here, here one, two, three are discussed in terms of definitions on pages four and five, actually tiers, tiers one, two, four. So that attorney or attorney took this or created this law, but it was a combination of work effort that was about some residents, property owners for the solar farms, as well as some of the developers. That's all been online and open to public views. And we created about a list of ten or, sorry, about twenty different critical areas that we wanted to focus on. Things like setbacks and things of that nature. We looked at different laws such as Lewiston and other, and of course Lewiston has much larger property zones for opportunities for larger farm, solar farms, you know, we kind of. The town board reviewed all the output from that, just so you know, the process, and came to some agreement between all the different various feedbacks, because obviously the developers, the property owners that want a solar farm, and the residents, neighbors, have some conflicting desires, basically. And the town board came to facilitate it, ultimately through that output, and came to what we settled on, what we thought we should present to the planning board and others as the final law. And the entire town board was part of that process, and that's what this outfit is.
Just, just a quick question, how how long has the moratorium then extended to?
An additional three months, it goes to October, I believe it's either the sixteenth or eighteenth.
Okay, and that that extension can be extended by the town board, April?
A maximum of three additional months, however, we we really want to, we really didn't even want to go this far. You know, we want to respect the developers and landowners that do have a desire for the solar. So we really kind of gritted our teeth just for this current extension. We're going to really work hard and we'll keep and the entire town board are really working hard to try and get to meet the deadline by mid-October. To be fair to the developers who whose plans have really been put on hold, you know, it has an impact on them.
Is there a reason why you have the battery definition in the law? And what if batteries change in five years from changing the law?
There probably will be, this is going to be a document that will change over time. Right now, there's no plan for large storage batteries, but we expect that that's going to come. In order to have solar, you know, and I guess most of the battery storage laws, we have the definitions of what types of battery, break down to, we're not talking about a model phone battery, we're talking about an industrial sized battery for storage of, you know, megawatt CDs of electricity, so that solar becomes more viable in the future. Because right now, it's, you know, turned in, you know, highs and lows with the battery. And there are communities near us that are starting to get both battery storage and some real safety issues. So really getting our first responders, if that were ever allowed on the island, we need to make sure that we have the right first responder controls in place, which this law does provide. Proper training and safety requirements.
There's, there's a document out there that describes prime farm land, I bring out where exactly it is.
Honestly, that's in this law, the town board decided not to pull it out, but there's actually prime farmland of importance by New York State, I do not believe there's actually any property on that one. So in a future draft, we might, or the next time we amend it, we'll probably drop that, but because of time constraints, we didn't drop that at this time. So that really, if you look at that particular section, it doesn't even apply to Grand Island. And we probably shouldn't spend much time in that particular section.
I do want to note that I looked in the town comprehensive plan, and there is a map in there that maps prime farmland and it maps farmland as statewide importance.
Does it show statewide importance of?
Yeah, it's yellow, there's a lot of it, and then the prime farmland. But there is prime farmland yapped in our sixty and some of our coast.
Sandy, what definition is considered prime?
I think it's a soil, USGS soil survey.
So I, you know, I, yeah, I saw the same thing we had, yeah. So I guess my question was, was, you know, when was that, when was that mapping done? Was that done, you know, fifty years ago? Obviously, the terrain has changed and so on and so forth. Then aside. And and I think in terms of, and by the way, I've got some comments, I've had some recommendations that might have been wasted. Sure, go ahead. Yeah. And I'll take a point by point by reference to the page and and point number. First is page six. Item five, C is in Charlie. It says citing solar installation, sunshel conform to the town and island purpose plan. So my question was kind of akin to what Sandy just mentioned. So I asked myself, how and where is this indicating in the comprehensive plan as of now? So I wrote the comprehensive plan, I can only find one citation, it was on page thirty seven, point number twelve. It simply says encourage the mobile energy system to underperform at scale and density to decrease locally load and minimize carbon emissions. It doesn't specify solar, it doesn't specify anything. It could be wind, it could be whatever, just a mobile energy system. So I guess my point is, any of that, a document that's as broad based as and as non-specific as the comprehensive plan shouldn't contain preference deciding specifics. Which, I mean, this document, this twenty page amendment redraft in its entirety is talking about, you know, the specifics of how, when, where, why, things are cited. So I I don't know that I'd make any, any reference, even a blanket reference per se to the comprehensive plan unless you're, you know, prepared to specify. Mapping was in the comprehensive plan, citing, you know, the origin of the mapping, and the agency that produced it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Otherwise, you were a applicant coming, you know, through the town, coming to the table to try to discern, you know, citing requirement into the comprehensive plan, it's just impossible to do. So I would eliminate that reference. Second point. On page eight, it talks about permitting and substantive requirements, tier three, tier four, mentions all the zoning categories in which they are permitted. And I know the existing law allows it in R one C, R one D. I would pull that out of the revised law. And the rationale for that is R one C, R one D, by both mapping and what exists there, for the most part, other than some vacant parcels are designated as medium to other density residential. And I I don't personally think it would be appropriate to, you know, to cite tier threes in those particular districts. Page nine, references R one C.
While you're on that sentence there, does the special use permit in that sentence only refer to R one D? Or does it refer to all of the districts?
It seems to, it seems to refer to all of them, Dave.
I'm not, I'm not sure I read that one. Does R one district have a special use permit? Right, I I think that sentence should be clarified. If it refers to all of them, then it should be clear.
Well, you know, sorry, Mike.
Right?
Hang on, Frank, what's what, finish here? Yeah, so so any event.
Dave, can you just keep your comment there, and we'll, and I'll come back.
Yeah, so so the essence of it is, is to not allow them in R one C and R one D. My next point is on, also on page nine, point F. It says in the third line, it says where other significant habitats identified by the town. So my, my question was, or is, what is the town or any of the boards identify the data in specific terms? How does it intend to approach this in practical and working terms in the future again? That relates in my mind to somebody who's coming forth and looking to do a project. And so if there are habitats identified by the town of Grand Island, I think we need a reference to something that can be easily found online on the town's website. So there's no mystery for somebody coming in with an application.
As an example, Bob, the EEDs, correct? You know, we already have them mapped.
Right.
Right, well, I'm just saying, as as an example, we have those mapped, yeah.
The next point is on page ten. And point I, first line says in and around. The phrase hand around is about as hazy as a phrase can be. It's either within those designated, you know, more central and south districts where it isn't. In around to me, I mean, he's at fifty feet, five hundred feet, is over here, is over there, is line of sight. So I would pull that out of there. On page. Page thirteen, agricultural resources. T is entangled. Items one, two, three, four, in their entirety. My question, we're on any map produced by the town as it's currently located, easily referenced and identifiable, particularly by potential applicants, various boards, you know, they're reviewing these things, or the general public for that matter. Number two, to me, doesn't pass law called basic smoke. Do we excuse nonconformance to the town code requirements, you give a farmer a free pass? Because a farmer falls under eggs in markets? If that's the case, then the town might as well see their, their, their red home rule and ignore the town code. In particular, in point number two of T, says to the maximum extent practicable. Practicable is defined as something that's doable or permissible. Okay? And if we're going to have, you know, some pretty hard and fast requirements, then it not allow, should, should not allow that kind of latitude for a special case, because the special case might fall under eggs in markets. That's all I have. Dave, I'm going to have you pick up next, please. Start in the beginning and walk through it, please.
So the.
Your next frame.
And I had someone, Bob's trying to put out, I'll start on page eight. A, A as an apple. The reference of special use permit was not clear to me as to whether it pertains only to the R one D district or all districts. All districts. So, so you're saying within the one and one R one district and R one D, there's a special use permit. Oh, I see.
Your, your language, you need.
Yeah, almost like the R one D of a standard one with special use. We just need to make the wording clear, it's the intent is there, it's just it could be misread.
Sure, but I, but I also share, Bob, that R one C, R one D, in my opinion, should not be included there.
Then I go to page, page nine. Now, I know the coastal assessment form is pulled from our agenda, but it's clear to me that it's probably going to come back to us in another month or so. And the whole idea is, is whether or not this solar law affects or impacts. I I think if we added under E, a number six, that included setbacks from any LWRP defined lands, that we would have ample reasoning or logic to deal with that application when it was coming forth. And those are the only two that I had.
Frank, you're up, Frank.
Frank, can you pull your white partial? Oh, boy, now you're up.
Oh, no. You are not getting a raise next time.
I was going to say that it it seems to me that a little as Bob pointed out, it really is a big and mild. Uh, on page five.
Scene five.
It is defines a tier three as anything that's not a K, B, or D, and it says it has to be less than. Thirty-eight, which means it could be anything from twenty-nine down to one. And then on page eight, it says you can put uh tier three in just about any district, A one. Uh, R one, R, R one B, R one C, R one D, that's just about anywhere. And I think that's a problem. I don't think it should be in any residential district. I think that's where you run into problems. It should be in in the only M and M one, M two. And I think maybe B one, that's my comment. I would, that's pretty significant. That's a problem. To put one in and R one.
If you look at the prior law, I believe the only thing we added.
I I didn't like the prior law. I I didn't.
Just so you know, just.
I didn't like prior law and I made that comment before. It doesn't belong, it doesn't belong in in my opinion, it doesn't belong. In residential areas, especially um. R one D, which is the smallest, doesn't doesn't belong here.
So but just as a point of reference, the prior law included all the districts except for B one.
Right.
But we're excluding, so we added B one, um, but we're excluding film center. Just so that everyone knows that what the prior law did have involving different districts previously.
And I've checked it at that time.
Okay, go ahead, Frank. What's another?
That's mine. You and I don't necessarily disagree on that point, just so that you know.
Oh, I I I think and experience has shown that it's not a good idea. There seems to be a lot of problems.
Yeah.
Um. That's my biggest point, but then there's you you can, that's the only one I, that's a big point I have. There's probably a lot of other ones that we worded makes it more clear.
Sandy, anything, anything?
Uh, yeah, I just a couple points, as though this new law is gonna prohibit. There's not going to allow anything over thirty acres or more than five megawatts.
What what page, John?
I'm sorry, page five.
Yeah, just use the wide open.
There is, there is exceptions that are allowed.
Two.
Oh, yeah.
But it's the number D, are you on D there?
No, C.
Which page? Sorry, I missed that.
So five, five C, correct?
Uh, page five, two.
Okay.
Yeah. So it seems like because tier four is going to be prohibited in all zone districts. Tier three, if the largest could be limited to thirty acres or five megawatts. So it seems like that's the intent there. That's just a comment for over overage summary, um.
I have to look around, but I do know that, let's say, a developer has thirty-three acres to put a solar farm. Um, well, it provides that restriction. There is also a mechanism to allow some exceptions, but you want it scoring not get too large, basically.
Okay, yeah.
But it it's in this law somewhere that I could find it if you want, but it is in.
Um, that's fine, um. Let's see, uh, I noted on page eight. Number eight, C. For tier, for tier three, the lot coverage, um, facility area shall not exceed sixty percent of the total area of these tax credit of the lot. Um. It could be further reduced by the town board. Um, it seems like that's pretty limited, um, maybe intended to be setbacks. I I'm not sure, um, but I guess in terms of that number, I don't know if that it seemed a little arbitrary or, you know, people just didn't want the background. Selecting that, you don't have to answer now, but I just.
Yeah, I'll just throw in this, the discussion the town board had, and we've had a big discussion on that, is that. Um, with the setbacks and the the size limits that we have, sixty percent is probably the upper end of what you cannot.
You haven't seen over that, correct?
Comment on that?
We haven't seen over that yet. No, so, yeah, that's, that was eighty percent in the last one. And uh, we thought that was rather aggressive, uh, to keep the setbacks and everything else, as Mike mentioned. Um, so we we backed it down to sixty percent and to my knowledge, and I could be wrong, but to my knowledge, we haven't put anything denser than that in yet. Um, we haven't crossed that threshold. And if you remember the original law, it was a fifty percent, then all of a sudden it went to eighty. Which seemed kind of like out of nowhere. Um, I don't think sixty is overly aggressive. But that's just my opinion. Um, if you have a a better one, we're listening.
Thanks for that. Um, I noted that page ten, L.
It's, you know. Would you want that sixty to be greater or less for your comfortable work?
Um, not I I am not necessarily, I just was curious about.
Okay, okay.
You were referring about it being an arbitrary set.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I guess some of, in some of the parcels, if you, with some of our higher number, R one higher uh density parcels. It might be prohibitive. Really do develop in a smaller. Um, page ten, L, deforestation is encouraged. I do know there's a requirement for a tree inventory of all trees larger than six inches diameter. Um, that's part of an application that may be okay and maybe it might be burdensome that that's just a comment for the student. It's a small, that's a kind of a small caliber tree, but um. Okay, then, page thirteen, T. Agricultural resources, we were talking before about the uh. T, number one, um, you hear say solar system located on the areas that consist of prime farmland, the farmland of statewide importance. Um, by the way, there is a nice map, map number five. In the comprehensive plan from twenty eighteen, it's a really good map showing um, showing those maps. So that is, you know, I think you could reference that in there, but um, shall not exceed fifty percent of the area of prime farmland of statewide. Or farmland of statewide importance on the parcel. And I just wanted to know, it looks as though some. Uh, an existing solar facility and a proposed solar facility right at this time, um. Do you have the prime farming on the on the their parcel? So I'm not sure if this would specifically exclude. A proposed um development, a proposed solar project at this time, if that's something to look at, um, is that the intention or not? Um.
I think it's, we could test that, um, but I'm gonna guess that the fifty percent. Um, may make it have concern for that developer. We haven't expressed that concern, but um, we'll hear more in a Monday, this Sunday, Monday, during the game.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I know too that number four, and if you wanted to follow sort of a different metric, number four on that same page thirteen.
Just just one second. So someone, you're gonna be capturing all this.
Fine.
I'm trying to take notes, but I.
It's recorded to Mike.
It's being recorded.
Yeah, that's why I'm a little.
I'm not sure, Mike, Mike is close enough to his.
We checked the mics today and they all work.
Um, just as a expression of a different way of a different metric, you might, you might want to rephrase, you may consider rephrasing as it is in uh. Page thirteen, T four, where they're talking about solar system should not, energy system should not occupy more than ten percent of all. Farmland of statewide importance in the town. So I mean, there's on the parcel, which is in the town, um, just, you know, an option there. Um. Let's see, page fourteen, the uh. Permit, decommissioning permit timeframe and abandonment. Um, well, a set special use permit is valid for a period of twelve months. And then also down in, that's A and T, because. Randomly not to be permitted for a period of one year, should be removed at the owner and operators except. That those seem a little short for me, or for such a. An investment in infrastructure, twelve months for a special use permit and one year to remove if if the. Facility is not producing electricity for a year, so.
But this is a clear, especially for the solar farms, I think even now are being renewed on annual basis. But does it drives, um, it's. In this case, in the new law, it's going to drive an inspection and confirmation of compliance. So that will be helpful, I think, to follow a period. And then if. You know, five, ten years from now, suddenly they stop producing energy and it's just sitting there doing nothing. Um, you know. The town is gonna act legally, they are offline for some reason, they can justify it, but. Um, you know, it does trigger the use of, you know, the decommissioning plan. So it's not sitting out there for the next twenty years doing nothing and cluttering up our environment, basically. So that's basically what the. I would think most generators won't want their solar plant to sit there, bad for a quarter month period without generating electricity. So I think it's unlikely that that circumstance will exist and not support the company going out of business or some other bad thing happening outside.
I I just think the one year invoking to get your remove your facilities for not for not operational for whatever reasons is a little too short. And it wasn't enough for the permanence of the of the infrastructure there. And then my last one is, I gotta go back to page eight, I I skipped this one, um. Where we're talking about eight, uh, letter B, we're talking about uh how the applicant should provide notice to. Uh, adjoining landlords or landlords within part of the property. I think the or should be changed to and. So you'd be, you'd be notified, you're joining the owners and any landlords within and landlords within five group of the property. And that's it.
Do you want to, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I had one additional one on page fifteen, C.
Fifteen C.
Yeah, this is in regards to decommissioning and change in ownership. Um.
Sorry, I missed that, what section?
Fifteen C.
Page fifteen. Letter C, change in ownership in regards to decommissioning. Uh, I would just, I'm not sure what the intent here is, but it sounds like that if there is a change of ownership, the. Um. Letter of credit or cash escrow. Is a continuing obligation that may not be transferred without written consent of the town of Green Island. Does that mean that if there's a change of ownership, that there is a continuing obligation of that?
Yes.
And but the town has to.
So change from from one owner to the other.
And the town has to approve it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because we don't want one to walk away and then there goes all that escrow and everything else and.
Right.
And it's a line of credit, so it's tied more to the developer as well. It's a more reliable than a bond, that is what we're doing, so. The land credit is, um, not the method we're going to be using for this. Um, but it needs to be tied to whoever whoever the new owner is. So we don't want him to just flip a switch and suddenly we don't have a decommissioning plan anymore.
Right, okay. That's good, that's what the intent is.
Yeah.
Frank, you don't, I'm sorry.
The only thing I had exactly what's seeing you. Uh, page ten, L, the report for tuition and the part mark. I think that should be a minimum, like one, that's my thirty second. So we'll be on the session.
Page ten.
Deforestation, six inch tree, and that's two, and like, he is the back of tree line, that's, oh, there's the other. You're gonna do that. They need to be able to get the soil, you know, it should be right around measuring trees, so that'll set them, can't put it in.
So just under L, you mentioned twenty-four, what was that?
The other, the other thing was. I heard out here.
Or the one back was it?
Yeah, if they're not using electricity of the top line, it's probably not the issue, you know, twenty-four, eighty. No, no.
Go ahead, Frank.
On on page thirteen. And. My contention is that really, most people don't care if the solar system is there as long as they don't see it. And so in number eight, it says chain link fence around solar panels shall be visibly screened. Um, I had a problem last time around, like I thought that the chain link's fence should be slatted so you can't see through it. What's the purpose of the fence if you can see through it? So it should be slatted things. And then there should be um some type of vegetation in front of the slide, just for, to make it look nice. But the point is that the slatted fence should be slatted and it doesn't say that, and it should. Well, what's the point of a chain link fence if you can see through it? Basically, what we do with all the dumpsters, we always make them uh slatted fence. Last go around, the developer says, wow, we don't want to do that, it's too expensive. So forth and then do it, and then you see the result, you see. That's the big deal. That's the big deal with the solar panels. Nobody wants to see them. Nobody wants them in residential areas.
Go ahead, Dave.
The decommissioning plan, it's, ten X one, I think it should be. It reads very awkward, it goes four, five, six, and then one, two, three. It's the Atlantic, it's the A forty.
You know?
Uh, definitely, I'm next. I don't have one. I I listened to the town board meeting and. On the setbacks, the solar, there was a couple of guys from the solar. Companies there that not talked, I believe they were, talked to the town board. And they were very confused about the setback. It didn't seem like they all made sense to them. And the. Minimum setback of five hundred or a road. It's a little secret. Oh, I mean, they've got to build a road that's capable of holding fire truck. Five hundred feet of road. For five hundred bucks, it would be for a stone road. That's a lot of money to put up on just to get the property before they don't. I I think that some of that setback, I can understand some of the idea, but I'm, it just seems that there's just too much in there on setbacks. And the other thing I just struck me that I didn't quite understand. Is people teach for sensitive visual receptor, people with pre-existing medical con- medical conditions. What medical condition? Eight four, sensitive visual receptor. People with lessons, people with pre-existing medical conditions. So if I have a pre-existing medical condition, I can. Impacted by the visibility of solar system.
I wonder if that got slipped in by some mistake. So I do know that, um. People. Any person, person.
Well, not only that, but at the end of that sentence, it says, you know, others, it's like everything's a universe.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm saying, like, what exactly are you talking about there? Like, I I think that whole paragraph.
And the medical differences. I don't know if that was in. Draw the lines, I'm not sure. So to be honest, that's could be a typo, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and and yeah, the the whole thing, I mean, like, likely the adverse thing effect, you can tell.
And then you you mentioned tier four, but then you say tier four is prohibited. Why are we even talking about it, though?
Sure, there is a gray area between tier three and tier four, where it's gonna be non-thirty. Um, I just tried to find it a minute ago. I know it's in here somewhere.
Um, hey, Dave.
Hey, Ben.
But it says tier four and and greater than thirty acres, and then the next line says tier four systems are prohibited all zone. So first you you set the size, and then you said, well, you can't do it. We paid you out of case. Indeed, we're back to back to number eight.
So, yeah, so.
Tier four.
Yeah, so it says, in the event, just like a microphone, that in the event, the body of company, jurisdiction, as the town board lawyers, leaves the use of use prohibition of tier four solar energy systems as standard, standard, applicable to tier three applying. So all the tier three requirements apply that tier four. And where that falls in, I mean, thirty acres is honestly a little bit arbitrarily set. And what if someone wants the thirty five or thirty six? Um, obviously, there's gonna be a heated discussion on it, but there's gonna be, you know, yeah, that reason, but in certain.
Well, Mike, the only comment I have to add is uh this thing was laws embodied in the code. And regardless of what, you know, criteria you set, it's thirty, it's thirty. It's not thirty point one or something greater than thirty. So thirty five, thirty six goes out the window. We had this discussion with respect to, say, percentage of open space in the P D B or classroom or something like that. So the applicant comes in and says, well, it's twenty five percent, but you know, I can only do twenty two. No. No, it's twenty five, you know? In this case, it's thirty, it's not something greater than thirty, so. In that can be raised. Right, yeah, but uh if it's gonna be.
Twenty five percent, you're saying?
Well, I mean, according to.
This is giving an option to make exceptions, right, when I say it is. And I don't know if that requirement or that twenty five percent um is adding flexibility to it. Not being familiar or maybe delta type of work.
Well, you know, I I I'm just talking about limits in general. And, you know, we know, we know these things can be waived, special exception, it's one of those with each point. Um, we might as well throw the code out the window.
Yeah.
My other thing was about the screen.
Yes.
Like, you're kind of like all over the board with the screen. First, you say use whatever I can sustain, and then you say, I have to have two rows of native evergreen shrubs. And then they've got to be fourteen feet wide after two years of planting and it just seems two rows of evergreen shrubs, well, how far apart are they? The two rows, they could be two fifty feet.
But no, it's gotta be, it it says um.
I think, I think maybe the intent is that maybe.
Visual barrier, so. You know, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a qualified person um help identify what 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 is the proper barrier to accomplish that, basically.
It says it should be completely screened from any adjacent property. So on the back of the solar system, that's in the back forty.
The setbacks describe that, though, adjust that, some of that. I believe.
But it says, it still said twelve D says completely screened from any adjacent property.
So there are foot requirements here, um, so that we're not wasting time in the middle of nowhere, so there's no visual impact. And that's part of that visual impact requirement. You know, if it's a campground, it might have a little bit different requirements. If it's a property with a house at the front, and, you know, once you get a thousand feet back, after that, the visual requirements, basically, are that pretty.
And I know there is a big thing on decommission. And when I was on the original solar panel, and I was against the commission then, because you're making these guys expose the bond or line of credit or whatever, and they're gonna take this thing down. Yet I can build a building and let the damn thing go to hell, and you don't do it.
Yeah.
So why can't, why isn't the solar, it's gotta take that down, but I can leave an old chunky building up there, just.
So I'm gonna give you the answer. The answer from what I've still, number one, the New York State Model One, nice sort of, it's they're promoting or pushing solar on action whose um decommissioning. Um, the purpose of solar is to be environmentally friendly. So I think part of it is, the reason why this is handled a little bit differently is, the real purpose or intent is to be environmentally friendly. We can debate that all day long, but at the end of the process, to leave something that could break down and have heavy metals released and whatever, um, they are requiring the the decommissioning and removal and returning the property back to the original state. To be environmentally friendly and meet what the one of the primary intents of solar farms are.
Uh, I think.
That's my understanding. Now, that's just from.
And and I seen that.
But I I hear what you're seeing as far as.
And I seen the solar companies were against it anyways. So I I that's just my, that's just my opinion.
The whole, the whole idea of decommissioning, uh, I think in large part harks back to when nuclear power uh came into being several decades ago. And again, uh, once uh those were no longer, you know, uh, effective or or needing to be shut down, you know, you didn't want residue or or contaminants left behind. So that's where the idea of decommission really started, in posting some form of, uh, you know, financial guarantee to assure that they can be properly dispossessed and and, uh, you know, mitigated and so on and so forth. And so that decommission has been around for decades.
I I personally think the big concern is is the panels aren't simply, you just can't scrap them. You have to pay to remove them. There's, there's a pretty substantial cost to to getting getting rid of old solar panels. The steel in the ground, that's probably worth more than, more than the panels, you know? Um, we just don't want to get on the hook as a town for having to pay for that for somebody who walked away from you. That's, that's why it's there.
Again, my point is if I have a current repair shop.
Fair point, it's a fair point.
Lifted hydraulic cylinder that's buried in the ground.
I get it.
And I book, it's all there, and it's all a problem.
But if you have a gas station, you leave tanks in the ground, you're on the hook.
Well, I understand the tanks, but if I'm gone, I'm out in Hawaii, you know, salt, sand, on the beach, you know, what good is it? You know, and then I went through this with Dan.
I could use these things.
First time around. And I was like, you know, normally you would, if they did pay their taxes, we would tour clothes, and then you put the the town, put the property for auction. Obviously, whoever bought it would have to remove the panels as part of their cost of buying property. And and I went through that with Dan.
Mm-hmm.
Just, that's just my.
Yep, also, also, you know, a lot of these properties aren't owned by the project sponsor. So they have a a shared agreement already, you know, to uh to lease or versus leasing.
Okay. Anyone else, Dave, Dave, did you say a while something?
So the one big question I wanted to ask you guys, if you don't mind, um, so I've had a couple people say the setbacks are a little bit confusing. Do they make sense? Do they easily explain? Should we sharpen that up? Should we reward that?
Well, I know when I listened to the guys talk on the town board meeting, they hit a lot of valid points.
Yeah.
I think that's, when you scroll back into the town board, you should listen to some of their comments.
Okay.
Would hope you would.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
For consideration.
Okay.
This is one, um, unitsmen have actually larger setbacks in almost every case, not every case, but I think ninety eight percent of them. Um, and they do have solar um firms that are in the middle of contracting. They have at least two or three projects currently that they're, they're being proposed in the town business themselves.
Big, big project.
Right.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point is not necessarily the numbers themselves, but how it's worded, does it make sense? Do you understand what we're trying to articulate? We could, we could, we can argue tit for tat with the numbers all day long, but do they make sense what we're trying to describe?
I want to comment.
Go ahead, Brad.
I just can't, I can't get this one. On page thirteen. The, yes, the sixty gap, bottom of the street, bottom like that. Unless that gap is demonstrating over lift of the wealth and safety of the community. Alternately, the fence designed specifically in that small area would be allowed. Well, first off, sixteen, that's only this big, what kind of animals do you want in there? And what kind of special animals in that food, pardon, funny rabbits in that food? I don't know if people get, I don't think you'd get a five, ten, six.
Oh, it will, oh, yeah.
I think, I think. Okay, I think Frank, when the last solar guy was here, and all came up, Diane, and they were not big on even that six inch gap, because it's only small. I wonder if that's, you get into.
They crawl under, they can just burp, I mean, they they, you know, they might be a foot tall, it's six inches, but they'll scrape out six inches.
I mean, a, a person need to get through a six inch hole. And then it was talked about, like, round holes and.
Yeah, feed-throughs, yeah.
If you drag down a three way, you'll see big solar panels with no fence. So this is somewhere within the no fence, and, you know, at least we have some wildlife.
Okay.
I think to your point, and I'm not sure we can.
The first setback is pretty, I I thought that you were part of.
Me too.
Right, that's, that's why I'm asking, because it, yeah.
Try to figure something out, but boy, if I were an engineer this and read that.
Right.
I have a real challenge.
Trying to articulate better. Right. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The numbers are their numbers, what they're describing is what's difficult. Correct, right, yeah.
So basically, what that's saying is, it's fifty foot from property limits. However, you're dealing with a residence, there's some tighter or larger um limits, basically. It's not what you.
No.
It says, it's not.
Limit reducing from two hundred feet to fifty feet, and then point of view like.
Right.
And I think the solar fellows were like.
Yeah.
Were getting to the.
So ultimately, the spirit is to drive it back from the road, to put it in the backlands. And that's the spirit we're trying to capture here. And that's where the four hundred and, you know, the four hundred foot number is coming from the road. Um, we're trying to keep a pretty generous setback to primary structure. That's pretty well defined, but a couple of those things to myself, reading it, I'm just like, I don't even know what we mean, you know, so that's why I, because.
And then you have the setback. And property, and then they're only allowed to build it at fifty percent of the property. Does this pretty much say no solar?
No, no, because.
When we're all done with this, is there maybe one plus a little work?
So that one on, there there's one existing now, that the closest house is six hundred and sixty feet away. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, like, E three says five hundred feet or sensitive visual visual receptor, there's that again.
Well, yeah, and and a visual receptor. Looking back to uh page ninety uh point five, uh, says that may be adversely impacted. What is adversely impacted? Who decides it, who says?
Probably the town board and ultimately.
Boards.
With advisement from planning board.
Uh, well, we got seven, seven votes and probably seven different people.
And that's gonna be true for many things.
This is the school talking about a solar system in your backyard and.
No, it's on their land.
It's on their land, but. The same wouldn't apply.
They're autonomous, they're autonomous, they're autonomous. We've had discussions where we've asked them to respect what we're looking at, plain and simply, but they are autonomous.
I I just don't like all the setbacks, like, like, I agree with Brad. You lower the eighty to sixty, you could cut it all back in, you set all the setbacks, and when I'm done, I'm gonna have, like, one battery in our little team solar. And I think that I think.
I I think it's likely. If it's not a full development, I I believe that that can be the case, and I wanted to find that out. Um, the developers wanted zero, to be quite honest. Um, and certain residents, of course, wanted the maximum, they wanted the whole property. So, I mean, we had to come to some compromise. This is not per lucid law, which is much more aggressive. Um, it's, we're trying to get a balance of, you know, having it in a place that's not gonna, I mean, most residents, when it's R one, you know, they expect a residence, not a solar farm or industrial complex, you know, energy generating complex to be in their backyard.
Well, likewise with A R.
Right.
Yeah. And that was brought up originally, too.
That's why I do think it's tough if I do put some restrictions, because I think a lot of residents aren't too pleased when this ends up in their backyard. And they didn't sign up for that when they bought their property. The real idea is New York City is pushing solar and, you know, we need to try and create a local law that's defendable, and that's what we're trying to do. That that's not gonna get stepped over at the top of.
So, well, well, you know, from from the top down, stepping, stepping on down, I'll just say, I've said many times before, own rule rules.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mag, are you gonna redo this and send it back to us?
Okay, so let's talk about that, just just so that everyone has an expectation. So, um, the town board's gonna make that decision. Um, we're gonna look at and look at three different categories. It must have changed before we put it into effect. If that's a de minimis change, so obviously, maybe the typo would have changed. Um, but if it's a major change, but it must get um revised before we um make it into law. And mind you, I'm one person out of five. So how that gets decided is gonna be subjective a little bit, so we'll see what comes of that. But just if there's a major change, it's gonna have to come back through the planning board and through the public hearing, bounces, et cetera. If it's um a important change, but we're gonna do it in a second amendment so that we can at least we leave and then release the moratorium um with a commitment from the town board to get the amendments done before the end of the year, ideally, um, that's probably an approach we're gonna consider. I think one of five votes, so I always have to qualify that. That's in my mind, the approach we're gonna take, because I do think we need to respect the developers and continuing to hold them as your project hostage. If we can release this, if that allows them to start working, they'll generally know the things we've worked with, that we want to move forward with fixing in the second amendment. But if you get this law into effect and release the moratorium, that's gonna be a real goal, I think, of the town board. And we made that commitment for the developers to try and treat it fairly as possible. So it's not that we're ignoring what you said, it's we're committed to making sure that we put the changes in, and that an amendment will start right in the middle of this process. We already have that draft basically ready to go, but we want to put this into effect. So you probably, I'd say, the probability of them seeing this come by here again is high. And hopefully, we can get this current law into effect and have that be a second amendment or a first amendment.
You're saying the probability of this is.
Before the end of the year. Because, you know, you you've noted a number of things.
A second law.
Let me declare, if you decide there's something major, immediately say, if there's something major and we just can't, it'll probably mean that we're not gonna hit the deadline for the moratorium, just just to note, because it's a very tight timing. But if there is a major thing that we say we can't justify putting the law into effect because of the impact of this issue, um, then we might as well change everything if we're gonna change one thing. But if we decide, yes, there are some things that are critical, we really gotta fix those things, or we can wait for an amendment to the law, and bring the town board commits to doing that before the end of the year. Um, we'll probably introduce this law with the understanding that we're gonna fix it um immediately following the institutional law. But to be very open, that's kind of what we're thinking.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm thinking, you need to talk about it in the board, and once again, one board out of five, it seems, I can right now. I believe you guys know how that works.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, communications, receiving file one thirty three, and I'm gonna end for this, uh, email that was lost. Okay, communications, receiving file one thirty-three, and I'm gonna, and four was, uh, emailed about less than. Is this received file that everyone's getting?
Yeah. Um, Jim, uh, will, will we ask to add, uh, to the referral to seventy-eight long road distribution facility draft, E I S?
Um, well, I think that would be one of their unfinished business, because he's starting on the, number three on, on the site plan approval, I don't know if we need to.
Is that?
Clarify that, or?
That's not, I don't, I'm not sure that's the scope, that's not the scope of that.
Right.
No.
We were asked to add the scoping document to the agenda.
Okay. Okay, are you making, uh, are you making a motion before? Dave's making a motion to add the scoping document as, I'm gonna back up back to number four.
Yes.
To referrals.
Yeah.
Am I at a second? Oh, no, we're, we're, he's pushing it back to referrals, are we?
And, and it's really not the site plan approval.
Yeah, we're just gonna make the scoping as number four in your referrals. That's Dave's motion, the second amendment.
A second.
Second, in the discussion, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And we're all set, so let's, let's go right straight to that then, Dave. Is, is anyone here?
He's online, I'm gonna grab the.
Well, let me see, so this is really about the town's perspective, we're gonna feed it back to the, um, the, the applicant. So, so this is really our feedback to the town advised by what the planning board thinks, um, if we've seen what they're missing in this. If, if they wanna speak, they can.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I'm not saying don't let them speak, I'm just saying, just so that you know kind of the ground rules, they submitted to us a scoping document for certain categories, um, that they, like, trapped at the ground and surface water, all of the things that, and, and now this is our, we're looking at it, because, Dave, did you think about these other two or three items, basically? We're, we're really high level at this point, um, we're gonna have bullet points of the things, so they're gonna add that the, the additional information for that, and then we're gonna, again, look at it and say, yeah, that, that's kind of what, that's what we expect for that.
Okay, so this scoping document is from the town board.
It's from the applicant, from the.
This is.
You had to see that, that's been added to that. So, the town board taking a whack at it.
Okay, so.
So, now, you see any deficiencies, and I recognize it's probably hard, but.
Yeah, I, I'd like the one, Mr. Huntress, give us a real brief.
That's.
Who is there?
Yeah.
You're welcome, you're on the way.
Good evening, everybody.
Keep talking, I'm trying to figure out what's saying you're coming on. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, Mr. Huntress, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me? I think you got.
Here, have them call, you know, give me a second.
Go ahead.
Have them call your cell phone, it works really good that way.
Okay. Mike, keep talking.
Okay. Can you, are we all right?
Mr. Huntress, can you call Pete Marston's cell phone, please? Do you have his number? I'm not gonna say it, it was Pete Marston.
Yeah, yeah. Sure have it. Mike's got it, Pete's probably got his number.
You're gonna call it in, Pete?
I'm looking.
I've tried that before, it doesn't work.
Hello?
Mike, you there?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna hook you in this way.
Okay, just do it right here. Okay, go for it, Mike.
Excellent. Members of the board, appreciate you taking that time, we're provided notice this afternoon that we're on it, and that. Apologize for not being very personal, but I'm short notice, I wanted to be styling, um, I, you know, I'm, I'm with, I think it's, is, uh, Mr. Madigan there?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, sorry, I, I heard him speak to the fact that he provided a scoping document, the scoping document was provided back in late June to the town board, and, um, the town board along with the council modified that draft, this scoping document, and this now one publicly posted on the town's website since, I believe it was probably the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth of August. Um, from act by standpoint, I mean, certainly, we didn't wanna go through the, um, environmental impact statement again, we've done this once before, um, you know, back in twenty twelve, it was recommended by the planning board to proceed with the changes without doing any self-frontal updates to the E I S, but we've been, I guess, placed in a position where we need to supplement our draft or the E I S that was done in nineteen ninety-one. So, we put together the scoping document in hopes of, um, I guess, one, it being, you know, vetted publicly, um, over the course of the next, whatever, couple of weeks, so that we are able to proceed with doing all of our environmental studies. Our expectation from the town board, and maybe Mike can keep and comment on this, is that, you know, it's to be a supplement to the E I S that was done back in nineteen ninety-one. And therefore, the evaluated factors in the E I S, um, are going to be those factors of greater impact than those items that were evaluated in nineteen ninety-one. So, to the extent the impacts to the environment are less, and the E I S that was completed in nineteen ninety-one, they will not be vetted publicly. Um, we've certainly are, as you can see in the scoping document, planning on doing essentially a, a brand new B I S. And each one of those components will then be evaluated against all the I S, um, to determine whether or not it's more or less impacted. And the more impactful items that are, uh, up for further discussion and question and comment, of course, the next few months before, hopefully, we're back in front of you, the site plan that's up, we're discussing.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Mr. Huntress, are we got him on the line?
The nineteen ninety-one E I S is thirty years old now. I would have some concerns about updating data there and not just comparing, uh, what we have now versus impact then, and, uh, if it's, if there's more, that's all we focus on. Um, it's really predated at this point, and I would, I would posit.
Yeah, I still go ahead with, you know, to the extent that items are more impactful, they will be evaluated thoroughly, everything's going to be looked at thoroughly, as the, the scoping document is very, very comprehensive. Um, and every aspect of the job is gonna be looked at, and then it'll be a matter of the town board working with us as supposed to determine what is, um, necessarily or necessary as part of the supplement for discussion.
Anyone else have any questions, and Mr. Huntress?
Yeah, just on the, on the document, um, just a couple of, of comments. And first, I guess this is more for the, for the town board, but, um, my experience with these is that more, more often than not, they, they fall apart or are challenged from a process standpoint rather than a content standpoint. And the fact that we didn't, don't have a formal referral from the town board is kind of a concern that I have. Um, this was, this was referred. Um, I, I can't say what the date was, you know, but we did vote and referred it, and actually, right after the referral, they go to your email address.
Okay.
Like, the same within an hour or two.
Okay.
Um, so it wasn't officially referred to, it's captured in the minutes and everything.
So.
Um, it was referred to this as well as the conservation advisory board.
So, it just.
Is that correct?
I, I believe it was sent here, I think that's when I was home sick, so, yeah. Yeah.
And, and really, this is kind of just a call, just if you see anything that we're missing, let us know. Yeah, so from the town standpoint. Advisory regardless of, go ahead. So, um, just page two there, who is the lead agency, that, that kind of the supervisor? You're welcome to be out, so. Um, on page, this page is our number, under two point zero, um, you talk about a project requires a single eighteen month phase of construction. Um, we, um, the applicant may not want to be that, uh, accurate there, it might be multi-phases, it might be more than construction, it might be, um, something that, uh, would be added there that would, um, cause the plan to be rejected because it wasn't finished in eighteen months or is a single phase.
That's a good point, thank you.
Uh, under three point one, uh, let's see. And we're in a negotiation phase, so, sure, we're gonna let him deal with that one.
Yeah.
We're probably not gonna choose that, but, but if Mike wants to negotiate that, that's fine, just remember, it's such a thing.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dave.
Um, uh, let's see, the next paper's up.
We were.
There, under three point one, traffic, um, I think it's important because this was brought up once before, that, um, there's an understanding to, um, be sure that the traffic studies separate the automobile traffic study from the truck traffic study, uh, they were all sort of, um, included in the one and.
Commingled.
Confusing from that standpoint. Um, noise, and I think this is actually covered in, near the end of the document, but, uh, noise dealing both with construction and post-construction noise. Uh, on the next page, under land excavation and filling, um, there was a conversation with the engineers previously about the difference between select and natural fill, I think it should be really clear as to, um, the differences between the fills and the quantities of each. Um, and I would add a, a final bullet there on, just before three point two. Sorry, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that one more time, just so I understand that? Under land excavation, first bullet on, once again, there's no page numbers here. Yeah, got it. Uh, the top of. So, just if you can make the point, I got, I've gotten most of the notes. To differentiate between the select and natural fill. And then a, a final bullet to add the impact on the I one ninety bridges, or bridges at long and the del roads. Under involved agencies, I would add, I would move the New York State through a, um, from an interested agency to an involved agency, they are the adjacent landowner.
Where, where are you doing?
Uh, once again, three, under three point three.
Three point three.
Yeah.
They don't have permit issue though, Dave, that's, I think, the def- defining line of interested versus involved. They really don't have a permit authority, I think, with proposal of the project. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm speculating that that's.
There's some that's a year, but I don't think, New York State and State Conservation Office, Grand Island zoning board of appeals, those are involved agencies, but I don't think.
Shepall's gotta give you clearance, so they would be an involved.
What about zoning board?
Uh, could be, yeah, very well. Now, like you said, just speculating from, you know, real quick, yeah.
And I guess I would like to see the planning board added as an involved agency, not just interested. And have, when they're interested agencies, the Grand Island Conservation Library Board added. And, and sorry, back up, when you're involved, you said New York State's really, right?
Hmm.
Yes. And was there another one you mentioned? The Grand Island Planning Board. And. Let's see, if there was a parent.
There's, actually, Dave, there is still speculation that the building requires a variance for height, because the fill from native soil generates a height that exceeds our, so that's why they are actually, um, a.
Involved.
Involved versus interested.
Okay.
But, and that's, and I think those were literally where the lines were drawn, a permit issuing or approval issuing versus, versus review and advisor, I mean, example, the planning board is actually advisory. You guys don't issue a permit or an approval, you give a recommendation to the town board for consideration, so you're a, you know, a, a, you know, interested versus an approval authority. I, I, that's kind of where the line's drawn on what's issuing an approval, issuing a.
Don't do that, that interest for planning board. Uh, well, planning board is included as an interested agency, although, if that's the, if that's the white of demarcation. That, that's all I had.
Anyone else have anything else? I, I have a question. Page.
Whatever.
And, and this isn't, is not for Mr. Huntress, it's kind of like, like, I'm assuming.
Are we done, Mr. Huntress?
Uh.
Can we relieve him?
I'm not even sure he's on the line anymore.
Let's just make sure.
Or he's the only one.
Okay.
And, and under three point one, was building height, how did we go from a forty-five feet to sixty feet?
Once again, it's, there is a, a currently being reviewed opinion right now that the fills required for creating the level pad are counted towards the building height because of changing the native lands. You've got a large fill on one end of the site, so the, the height of structure resulting lands down here, they're filling, okay, lands like this, they're filling to this and building this on top of it, this is your height. And, and there is a stance that the attorneys, I, I think, are considering that or have held that this project may need a variance for height in review of how that is written and defined.
I, I got that, but, I know I'm residential, but we covered on that, I have a low lot. Once I'm.
I'm, I've, all, all, they've literally, well.
I've done my fill, built my building, I go from finished grade up, it doesn't matter what I started with, because we have a filter that automatically when you do residential. I don't know, I don't do this type of commercial work, or Mr. Chairman. I, I just don't understand why we would take the height from the hole in the ground and not.
I mean, you know, again, it's.
There is. I mean, I, I've done residential, I was where I was six, seven feet underground, and they never said I needed a height variance. Well, I was still the height variance of the residential house, thirty, thirty something, thirty five. Thirty five, so, I had a thirty-five foot house and I had a six foot low lot, they didn't say it was a forty-one foot height. If I, I filled the lot and built the house and then measured the height. I just, I just was, I just wanted that clarification for myself.
Like, like, I was supposed to said earlier, uh, it's, uh, uh, advice.
But, okay. Just to answer the question, I don't have any, you all have anything else?
Oh, no.
Um.
Actually, just a quick footnote, two point here, sorry. The notes from the solar, because they're on such tight timelines, I mean, if you could just fire that out as soon as possible, even if it's a rough draft and not official, um, just so we can start working on it between now and next, this coming Monday.
Are, are we moving that out by eleven o'clock tonight, or by eleven?
I need notes, so between new notes and my notes, I can figure out what this guy was saying.
Well, the audio, the audio will be, yeah, the audio will be quickly available for me.
We're all set, does anyone else want?
If we're not live, so I don't mean that we'll be voted out, but that would be helpful.
No, it's.
Okay, anything else from anyone? Okay, Mr. Huntress, thank you.
Thanks, have a great night.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, back to unfinished business.
Excuse me, is there a motion or anything?
No, not one of that. Just for.
Just for discussion.
Just for discussion.
Your comments provided to town board, plain and simply, which is probably the best way to summarize that.
Unfinished business. Uh, number one, we're just gonna leave on the board. Two, three, and number four, Mr. Shorts, not off, I'm leaving, patient, I'm sorry. We're familiar with what you were doing and everything, last time, so how did you make out with the Z A B?
Hey, it's, boy, I'm about to, um, my house on that, and you're careful in, in getting that approved.
Okay.
So, if you're gonna question, I'll record and, it won't then.
So, are we looking for site plan approval tonight?
Yeah.
Basically, we're good with, uh, zoning board, I reckon it's good. We see, we're good with, uh, zoning board, everything is good?
Yeah.
So I guess we, does anyone need any refreshing, we've been through this before. Anyone have any questions?
With the duration of this, I'm gonna ask you guys, just to condition back with engineering, I have. This has been crusty and on the back burner for a while in terms of the site plan review status, and I, I'm just gonna, you know, obviously, we go to the town board conditioned on engineering, I think what they, you know. If you guys would include that in there, under there, so I, I don't recall any drastic issues or problems for us, and I've worked on this for a long time, but it's.
Thank you.
It's in the, it's in the cobwebs for a while, Jim, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Any questions from anyone else?
So just looking at your C four zero, the areas that are actually dotted are gonna be demoed. Here, here on Z, yeah. So the areas in actually actually the residential areas. Well, but right now, they're warehouse, right?
That's existing building.
Yeah, so both, both those are gonna be done.
We're looking into that right now, right now, it's, 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 it's.
You're gonna build a topping?
Yeah.
Well, that, that lettering doesn't show you building that top one.
This is the first floor here, the existing first floor, that's still there.
I'm doing that, those are just created here buildings.
This, this is all.
The front part of the building is actually black, over is actually black.
Yeah.
We're looking at now, it's doing some demolition, looking at one story down and front, and the front.
In this area right here.
Level, and rebuilding from the foundation up.
I don't, you think the foundation and structure and all that is table head two more stories?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's fine, it's, we're doing a lab now, it's, from a cross community view, when you build a building, it's better that we take down. The, those, those older one story pieces and build new, I need just the.
So we fix it, so, so to back to my question, you're planning to demo those two buildings? The ones that are X.
That, that doesn't mean it's, uh, the upper story residential, that's what we do that for. But yes, most areas that we're.
Okay. So, this, uh, on your site plan, in, in, what I would say, south west corner, is that a open area or is that? Uh, outside seating area or whatever, it doesn't seem to guide with your rendering with loud light. With southwest corner.
Mm-hmm, ready to go upstairs?
No, 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 we're at the corner here. What's that, right?
The outside.
Your lettering doesn't show.
Pollens are, are reviewed. Well, it's not, but it's a.
And then in the front, is the drive through for, was like a Tim, Tim Hortons or?
Yes, the solar, Tim Hortons, yeah.
So what's the second drive name?
The second was the stacking.
For stacking?
Yes, it's a double drive through, okay, with, uh, single.
No, single.
I think, I think, Dave, we talked about that way back, cause they were way out into the parking lot, they must have came up with the double line. Which I see many of the, I don't know if you're gonna get to one, but many Tim Hortons and the double line with one pickup window.
So then in the back, you're gonna, what, pave all that line and striping and so on, because it's just all stone and stuff, right? I know, uh, code always is concerned with being able to strike so we can count the spots and so on.
Well, public spaces and uses are, are to be formally paved, and obviously. With designated parking and counting as designated parking, you can't spray gravel, so it's a paved surface that then we establish it on, absolutely.
Yeah, cause right now in the back, it's just. Better. So what's this land bank parking, is that for? Sixty third land bank parking.
In the upper left, in the upper left corner?
Yeah.
That was, that was, um, we thought the case was, making sure we had additional land bank for the hole needed. And then we did the, the day and night off parking and make everything work.
Yeah, if I remember right, that's what it was, Dave, they were gonna have, uh. The permits and the people in the school, she was already, but yes, for some additional bank.
Right.
So in case they needed more parking.
I think it was, literally, what. Everything was in this.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
But.
See something.
Yeah, so that's why we have space, that's what they're showing. Anyone else have any other questions, or Dave, very dumb, sir? Anyone else? Motion? Second, second by Val, any further to this question? All in favor?
Aye.
Once, once again, just clarity, once again, that was conditioned also with engineering's.
Yes, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
So, in that, the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Great building, we'll wait and see. It's been a long time, I'm, I'm thanking for your patience. Well, number five, I, we're leaving on our agenda. Unfinished business.
Hi, sorry.
What?
I, I don't know if this is appropriate, I don't know if it's on our communication, I got a letter in the mail today about. My place being approved by the town board for bed and breakfast. I thought I was supposed to be presenting here tonight or getting approval by the planning board. I didn't see myself on the agenda, so I was here tonight, I just wanna make sure I haven't missed anything. And I don't know if this is.
Does she not have her?
The next one.
I think it missed our, it missed.
I got a letter today saying that it's gonna be next Monday's town board meeting. I was told when I submitted my application that I would be on this night's planning board meeting, so that's what I was here for. So I just wanna make sure nothing's been crossed and that I'm all covered, or, and I apologize for interrupting, I don't know.
Is this a new, then you're going to sign a revol?
Correct.
What's the address?
One twenty one Amberwood Drive.
I remember seeing it, I believe that we referred to the planning board and set a public hearing for the next town board meeting, don't quote me, I'm pretty sure.
Right, but if, yeah, but if you guys did it at your last meeting.
It missed the cutoff for you.
The top, the agenda's set ten business days for the planning board, which is before that mode, then that's, I, I'm sorry, you sat through all this.
No, it's okay, I was seventy two, it's when I paid my application fee and I was told, like, was when it would be, I'm trying to coordinate with my neighbors.
Right.
I'm hoping my neighbors to be in the patients today without me talking them to the first, I wanted to make sure it was here. So now I'm worried my neighbors about.
Well, this board, yeah, this board hasn't gotten it yet.
Yeah.
Then how come it's going to the town board, to the, to come here first?
No, no, it actually, tech, technically, the application starts with the town board, the town board then receives it, and. Let's say if there's a interest, whatever, or moving forward, they refer it to the planning board then for act, for a, a recommendation, which then comes back again to them.
Okay.
Um, we try, we sometimes go, you direct, in, instead of doing that, which sometimes blows up time. You make application example to Casey or, or, you know, to building or engineering department, instead of waiting for that referral to the planning board, we get it onto the planning board agenda. But with the town board, with the way the application and everything played, it did not make this, this meeting, you're, this would be.
My neighbors received a notice of a public hearing now in regards to my property. Since I received.
Because the town board called for one and scheduled one, there is a notification part, yes. That information, that information will be part of. Also what the planning, you know, what the planning board gets with the project.
So it's the way the timing follow play, the town board will hear about it on a public hearing before this.
And end up having, actually, leave it open until.
Yes, my neighbors have received notification.
It would seem, yes. I, I believe the clerk's office would have done the mailing, they're, I, they're not.
The paper.
Okay, so we just received our legal notice today in the mail, because we're the owners, they will get, okay.
They'll get theirs, so you're gonna be in front of us next, beginning of the next.
There'll, there'll be paper and oran, positive in terms of, right, notification.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I practice communication with my neighbors, we're not the bad neighbor that wants to surprise, that makes sense, so. When it was explained to me, I was called to be here the thirteenth, because you all were here first, so, it just sounds like timing wise, it's.
Yeah, just, just the way I saw with the meetings, I'm, sorry you sat through this one.
And thank you for being a good neighbor.
Saying that you're not on here, you know, come up before I get started.
Uh, well, no, but ten, ten business days before the meet, so the meetings are, this board always meets the second Monday of the month. Ten business days before that meeting, the agenda is posted, if you don't see it there, you're calling in and.
I actually intend to, I have to follow city council meetings, I understand the agendas, I should have looked at this one before, yeah, I just assumed it was here, okay, sorry for the interruption.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, we have a motion? Second by Brad, second. Second by Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.